Good evening. It is 6:31 and this is the municipal, Trophy Club Municipal Board Meeting. We do have a quorum of the board members. We do have one board member missing, and that is Secretary Treasurer Caston Gay, who's not with us tonight, but we do have the four of the five other board members with us. Also with us via Zoom is our attorney, Tony Corbett, so you may be hearing from him as well. I'll remind the board members, please speak up and into the microphone so that Tony can hear us. And Tony, if you would do the same, we would appreciate it.
Will do.
Thank you. Citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the board on any matter whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The board is not permitted to take action on or discuss any comments made to the board at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The board will hear the comments on a specific agenda item prior to the board addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or the time permitted by the president or presiding officer. To speak to an item, you must complete the speaker's form. That includes topics of your statement. Citizens' comments should be limited to matters over which the board has authority. And I do have a one here, citizen's comment from Robert and Dixie Henson. So if you folks, welcome, number one. If you would please join us here at the microphone, and also make sure you state your name again for the record, as well as your address.
Can we unmask?
Yes, sir. Please do, so we can hear you.
Thank you. My name is Robert Henson. My wife Dixie. We live at 210 Inverness Drive in Trophy Club. We've lived here for 11 years in that location. Prior to that, we lived on Number 4 Hannah Court for five years. So a total of 16 years in Trophy Club and loved most every minute of it.
Okay.
What we'd like to do, we had an incident happen over 10 days ago, on the 27th of February, the sewer backed up into our home and covered pretty much the entire floor. It's a ranch-style, single-story home. About 5:30 in the morning, Dixie and I woke up to smell of gas. We don't have gas in our home, so we did that morning. Dixie looked and our commodes, our tub, our shower, were all filled with brown effluent. And we called the emergency number for MUD. They came out very promptly. In fact, any contact we've had with the MUD people have been nothing but pleasant and respectful. We appreciate that. Anyway, they sent a guy in a pickup, came in, he didn't come in the house, wouldn't come in, I guess he's instructed not to, and said he'd have to go get the big truck. So at that time, he looked at a manhole in our front yard and said, had nothing to do with our plumbing, it had to be behind us somewhere. So he went and got the big truck, went behind us somewhere, and about 11 o'clock in the morning, it broke loose. It broke loose in the form of solid waste all over our home. I have pictures here. I would like for y'all to view if you have the opportunity. We were using two water vacs and siphon hose, and it still wasn't keeping up with it. Finally, when it broke loose, everything went down except for what was strewn all over our home, as you can see there. What I have called my insurance company, and they, my agent, I've never met him. I don't know if y'all ever met your agent, your insurance agent. But anyway, the adjuster lives in Portland, Oregon, and wasn't going to come down here, I guess, to look at my problem, said that, of course, it didn't cover it. So I called back to the MUD people and talked to Debbie Vasek at TLM. I guess that's your liability insurer for MUD. And she said she'd check on it and call me back. Never did, so I called her. And she said that she had looked at all the paperwork and determined that MUD had no liability or culpability in the fact that my home got covered with sewer. And so what we're here for, and Dixie can speak to this as well, we would just like MUD to compensate us for our out-of-pocket costs and would ask the board to consider that. Do you have anything to say?
Thank you, Mr. Henson.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Mrs. Henson, anything to add?
No, other than I haven't been living at home for three weeks.
Yeah, she's very sensitive to odors and smells. And I was in the Air Force. I'm used to odors and smells.
Based on the pictures, I can understand your wife's position.
Well, feel free to keep the pictures.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Will somebody be contacting us, or?
Yes. Again, we're not permitted to speak to the issue tonight, but we have the information, and the board will discuss it, and yes.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming, both. And I believe we have another guest who would like to speak to the board tonight, and that is our very own chief, fire chief, Jay Taylor. Jay, welcome, and thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. President Flynn, directors, general manager Formanton, thank you for having me here tonight. I'm really here for just a couple of thank yous, really briefly. And the first one, I'd like to reach out to these two gentlemen right here, Mr. McMahon and general manager Formanton, for all their assistance during our recent weather developments that we had. Our winter event that we had was very trying. We had well over 120 responses on that. A lot of them were water shut-offs and fire suppression systems that we cut off, things of that nature. But the staff itself was very helpful for us, actually provided us some extra tools to help us with that. They jumped in with us, and without their help, we wouldn't have been able to accommodate our citizens in a way that we were able to do that. So my hats are off to both of you and all of your staff for what you did for us, because we really do appreciate it. I think it was a well-oiled team. Everybody worked well together, and we just, we just had to hit it as we could. It was all hands on deck that week. So as you know, everybody had their own personal challenges as well going on at the same time. And with that, our staffs did what they needed to do to accommodate everyone and to get the job done. So I want to say thank you for that. I also want to say thank you for the support of all the directors for the recent, last MUD meeting. I apologize for not being here. My wife had just had surgery. I wasn't comfortable leaving her at home. But the support here, we were pleasantly surprised with the raise that we received as a department. Weren't expecting that at all. However, we're very gracious to accept it, but we appreciate the support with that. And not only that, with everything else that you also provide us all the time. So I just wanted to say thank you on those two accounts, and I appreciate you having me tonight.
Well, Jay, let me say on behalf of myself, now I won't speak for the board, let them do that, but we certainly value the relationship that we've developed with you and with your team, including the newest member of the team, Harrison, right? Got to meet Harrison?
We had Harrison. We were going to try him as an accelerant dog. It was just a little bit too much for him, to be honest. And so he's decided, we decided he's going to stay home with the Cochrins, and that's not going to work for him. There's just too much.
Oh, okay.
Too busy at the station, too many people coming in, too many walk-in EMS patients, things of that nature. It was unsettling for him. And so we decided just to, it's not the right time for that, so we decided to pass on that.
So the fire department's loss is the Cochran's gain. Is that, okay, excellent. Well, again, thank you for everything that you do. We appreciate the working relationship we have, not only with you, but certainly with the town, and that takes hard work, and we appreciate that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, too.
Appreciate it, chief. Thank you. Pass it along to the guys. Excellent job.
I'll do that. Thank you.
Congratulations on the fire rating, too.
Thanks, sir.
Outstanding.
Mark's part of that.
Yep.
For the distribution. Thank you.
Okay, reports and updates. Item one, staff reports, capital improvement projects, water operations report, wastewater systems reports, financial reports. Questions about reports? And I'll turn it over to Alan.
I do have a little information for you tonight. So today, we received information on the water line interconnect project. We've been waiting for the final two remaining parcels to get lender approval. We received the lender approval today and spoke with Half and Associates Right-Away Group today, and know that they received those documents. They have funding directions, so hopefully we can get all of those documents closed and get those parcels funded. And I don't want to speak ahead of schedule, but hopefully we can get it advertised and maybe start construction as soon as May. I'm hopeful of that date.
What's the next step that has to happen, other than this step up?
Closing documents and getting the funding. Then, once we get the funding and we know we have the parcels complete, then they can finalize 100% plans. We'll advertise for bid, and then, once that's done, we'll start working towards a construction begin date.
Good. Any other comments? Alan, you'd like to add to staff reports?
Mike, you said that we were 35% on the Chimney Rock Water Line project, correct?
Correct.
And the wastewater treatment plant fence is all installed. They're painting the fence except for the gate. Has the gate been installed?
The gate has not been installed yet. Only thing we've got left.
They should be finishing that up probably in the next two weeks, I would assume.
I would assume.
Lori and I reviewed the website templates today. They're coming along great. They're looking great. We've taken some of y'all's comments that y'all have had and tried to implement those where we can, excuse me, specifically to the logo discussion we had. We've got that taken care of. I've asked them three different times, so.
They understood what I was saying.
They understand exactly what you're saying, so you're right on point.
What was Mark's, what was it?
There's no reason, the logo should have been a one spot in their directory that they just kept referencing. You didn't need to redo the entire website just to change a logo or to...
Isn't Director Rose the king of the logo? I mean, huh?
No.
Have we done anything on the case study?
No, we've reached out to some folks, and we're waiting for a response.
Because all you have to do is Google, and there's probably about 20 or 30 of them from MUD's, as close as North Texas.
Yeah, we're working on trying to gather something on that for you all.
What was that for, Kevin? I'm sorry.
Case study.
Oh, oh.
The question, I mean, those things, you want to strike when the iron's hot, not wait two or three months down the road to toot your horn about what backup systems you had. So I just asked them about it.
Okay. Alan, back to the website. Were we not going to engage some local homeowners if we talked about that?
What we have, we have a date of roughly April the 5th. I plan on getting some, I guess, dummy sites set up, so we can send that out to y'all, and everybody can take a look at it before we go live with it. We can review the content. A lot of the structure of the website's already been done and taken care of. So if we had any comments, it'd be minor as far as trying to figure out where things might be, or streamlining is what we've been working on. So it's very streamlined. We've found a lot of redundancy within the website itself, so Lori's been spending a ton of time going through and updating our information and cleaning up documents and getting it ready to go. So hopefully, we can have something to send out a few weeks before we go live with it.
Yeah, I mean, we might think we know everything about everything, but we're not website experts. Mark might be more so. But, you know, having the input of the voice of the field, you know how I am about that, I think it can only help us to the ones, the end users are going to look at this, so, okay.
That's the intent.
Have we researched or come up with passing it out to, like, a target group of citizens? I mean, they're the ones that are going to be using the website.
That's what we, that's what he was just referring to.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, we were going to send it out to the directors, and then y'all could push it out to people that you felt would be very engaging in that and giving feedback.
All right. Mr. Rose.
I have a comment in the finance area. I requested the inclusion of monthly totals in the general fund year-to-date budget variance report. I want to thank staff for doing that. It makes it a lot easier to review and look at things on what occurred on a monthly basis. I do have a question on that line. If we go to page 17, give you a chance to get there. We're looking at wastewater there. Fuel and lube showed an expenditure of $8,327 for February. Caught my attention.
I don't think it was 8,000 just for February, was it, Stephen? I know that we had a large amount come in for February. We had a fueling truck come in, right, during all the storms and everything, just to make sure all of our generators were topped off and everything during that time. But I want to say it was only about a $3,500 charge.
So there's anything that's been charged for that month? This is with regular fuel maintenance, regular fuel on there, plus that, plus the fueling on there?
Yeah, so I think that was the big expenditure there, where we actually had a fuel truck come on site during that time.
Yeah, make sure you're talking into the mic. Thanks.
And we had to refill up all the generators after the, after the storms. That's re-topping everything off afterwards.
I mean, it was, it was enough to catch my attention. Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions, Bill? Is that it?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. All righty, consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the board of directors and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. So two, consent, consider an act to approve the consent agenda. A, February 2021 combined financials. B, February 15th 2021 regular meeting minutes. And C, approve contract number 2021031501 with NewGen Strategies and Solutions for performing a water sewer rate study for the amount not to exceed $37,500, and authorize the general manager to execute contract documents.
I'll make a motion to accept a, the consent agenda. Items A, B, and C is stated.
Motion from Director Carr to approve the consent agenda, items A through C. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second? Discussion. No discussion? All those in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous. Regular session, item three, receive update regarding water and wastewater master plan. I believe that's Leah.
Directors, I'm just going to turn it directly over to her. She's prepared a PowerPoint for us to look at tonight, and we've been talking about our master plan for the last few months. I wanted to make sure that we got some information in front of y'all now before we started going through the budget process. That way, you all generally had an idea of where we're at and where we're going to be going, and what we're going to be looking to y'all for as far as understanding what we're doing and trying to do long-term, especially over the next five years and creating that five-year strategic plan. So I asked Leah to come in and give us some information tonight.
Thank you, Alan. My name is Leah Hodge from Half Associates. We are currently serving as the district's engineer. I have with me this evening Preston Diller and Matt Stahl. And Matt is going to give a presentation on the district's GIS system, and he's also going to go into some, give you some information about how that can be used for future asset management. And then Preston's going to give an update on the water and wastewater master plan. We will try to keep it brief, and then, you know, we can follow up, and y'all can ask any questions you may have. So with that, I will turn it over to Matt. Thank you.
Thank you, Leah.
Thank you.
Good evening to the board and to Alan. As Leah said, I'm going to start out here talking about the, these first two topics. So we'll go into the geographic information system, just to give you a sense of the timeline, how that's developed here over the past few years, as well as the asset management program. So the GIS, the geographic information system, just a very basic timeline here. This started several years back with some CAD information, map book. These were used to build the water and sanitary line work for the system. Some spatial adjustment was, was needed there, but that was kind of where the GIS got started. We also pulled in some fire hydrant information that had GPS data associated with it, and we were able to pull in a number of the attributes from that information. Likewise, Dallas County Appraisal District parcel data and city limits information that was brought in in 2019. And then, also in 2019, we brought in the TCQ Water District boundary data, and using some on-the-ground survey from Half, we were able to consolidate some of those boundaries and clean up some of that information. The field asset verification effort, this consisted of the Half team going out, using GPS devices, and getting more refined locations for different assets in the system, for some of the manholes, the fire hydrants, and the water valves. On this effort, we worked together with Trophy Club MUD Number One team to identify some additional manholes, and many of these assets were photo documented. And as you see here in the screenshot of the web map, we're able to reference in those field photos so that they're available through the web map. And we'll take another look at that here in just a moment.
I'm sorry, maybe I got cut off. When was that done?
This was done, I believe, last year was the bulk of it, the field verification effort. The plan-set polygon information, this effort basically consisted of taking a look at the water and wastewater plan sets, bringing those in, you know, in the spatial location where that work was done, and doing a combination of actually creating a reference shape for those polygons, as well as extracting some of the attribute information from the plans. So we find that this is a really good tool. It not only helps to build the GIS, you know, harvest the information from the plan sets, but it's also very helpful in terms of referencing those plans, having them spatially located and linked right there in the plan set. It makes them much easier to, to find. So this is the web map that I mentioned. Most of you are probably familiar with this. It has a number of tools and functionality. I won't go through all of these, but there's, there's markup functionality, measurement functionality. This particular web map is actually a collaborative tool, so it does have some editing functionality, so that Half and the Trophy Club MUD are Number One are able to collaborate on some of this information as we work through it and refine it. And it even has a Google Street View functionality as well.
I have a question quickly. Is this, is this operational for the staff currently?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay.
Yes, there's a secure login on the web platform there. It's accessible, basically, from anywhere.
This is similar to the Dayton CAD site. Are you familiar with Dayton CAD?
It is.
It has the GIS.
Right. It's essentially a web GIS, so you don't have to have any special software installed on your computer. And I will make one note on this. With the new ESRI licensing agreement, this site is something we'll be looking to upgrade to the latest server platform here, probably over the next year. Alan, I don't know how much you've talked to Aaron about that, but that's, we'll keep the same look and feel, but just give you the latest and greatest technology. So now, I'd like to transition to discuss the proposed asset management program. This program would leverage Trophy Club MUD Number One's work and investment in the GIS data that we've just looked at, and overall lead to more efficient operations and maintenance, as well as extended asset life. And we'll be focusing on the water and wastewater systems for this. So for what we're calling our Phase One initial look at the asset management program, we have taken a first look at the utility district's asset management data. We've taken a first look, performed a data gap analysis, and also gone through a gap filling exercise. And we're going to talk about that, talk about some of the assumptions that we used for some of the key asset management information. As Phase Two of this program, our strategy would be to refine these assumptions, refine the data that would be used by the asset management program. So the first key data that we're looking at is age. We'll look at age, material, and size. The assumption that we've made here is that in the absence of specific information at the pipe level, we can look at the year that different development areas came online and make the logical assumption that these assets were installed right around that same time. So we did that for the water system there on the top, wastewater on the bottom. And using that approach, we were able to fill about just over 80% of the age attribute for both systems. There are still some gaps, but we would look to address those as the program moves forward.
So how do you know what's missing? I see it says...
So what, what that is referring to, that 18% is basically the, either those, those pipes would have had missing plan sets, perhaps. The development areas might not have had age explicitly called out. So it'd be that type of thing. There'd be gaps in, in that data set we were using to assign those, those development ages.
At this point, then, there are, we have done some replacement on water infrastructure over time, but that would not be included in the data set at this point. Would that be correct? Because you went off of plans.
Based on what we've done here to date, just this initial look, that's correct.
Okay.
That's the type of thing that we would need to go back and make sure that there's new developments.
This is, this is still preliminary. Once they get done with the water and wastewater model, that's going to be a key determining factor for what he's pulling out as far as asset management goes.
Yes.
Yeah, but good point. The, the second key attribute we're looking at is material, because, of course, that, that plays into asset longevity, standard lifespans, failure properties, things like that. So this attribute was not yet populated in the GIS. What we did to take a preliminary look at this was we assumed that those lines that are older than the 1980 timeframe for the water lines, that those are likely to be asbestos concrete, just because that was a predominant material used prior to that time. And then likewise, for the wastewater system, lines installed before that date, before that year would be likely to be clay pipe, BCP, and then the newer lines, by and large, should be PVC. So we've, we've applied that assumption for material. And you can see here kind of the distribution of those different materials. And I, I won't go into this too much, but I will point out the asbestos concrete material type, we're showing just over 14 miles there on the water system. And depending on, in a moment, we're going to look at some typical design lives of the different pipe materials. Depending on which end of the range you look at, most of, some to most of the asbestos concrete in the system has likely aged out. So that would be an area we'd want to certainly look at specifically.
Did you have percentages? That's not percentage. What's, I mean, it looks to be just eyeballing it, like 25% or?
Yeah, maybe 15. I believe there's 82 miles of both water, pipe, and sanitary sewer in your system. So 14 miles out of, out of 82. But a fairly large percentage, definitely.
Yeah. Mike, you could confirm that by the videos we've done on the lines, can't you?
We don't video water pipes. We only video wastewater pipes.
Sewer lines I'm talking about.
But that sounds right. I think last time I talked to Sophia, it was about 82 miles of pipe.
I do have one question on what's included. You showed the, you showed the map at the beginning of your presentation. I want to make sure that you capture that water line we have that goes back over to 377.
Let's see here. It's on there.
It's on there. Thank you.
And as we're going through and everything, all the pipe replacements that we have done in the past, we're putting those in our GIS system.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So then we'll move on to the last key attribute that we would look at, which is the pipe size. Now, by and large, the, this attribute was relatively complete in the GIS, going back to the plan sets. So we didn't make any assumptions at this time to fill any gaps. There are just a few unknowns. You can see in the table there on the left, but we've left those alone for the time being. I will point out just a note that most of the system, over 80% for both the water and wastewater systems, is under 12 inches, which is typical. So then, those larger pipe size ranges are your trunk mains and larger water mains. So based on the So, uh, based on this, uh, this phase one evaluation, we've made some preliminary assumptions about, uh, the needs for rehab and replacement in the system. Uh, and those are primarily based on age. Uh, what we've done here is to assume that, uh, roughly 5% of the system by length would need some combination of rehabilitation and replacement. Uh, now at this time, like I said, this is, this is very much a, a high planning level kind of assumption, but it is fairly typical for what we see in other systems in, uh, in North Texas and in the DFW area. So purely based on, on those assumptions, if we, uh, consider that about 3% of the system would need some, some form of rehabilitation, we were, and I apologize, these are, are in linear feet. It works out to about two and a half miles for the, the water system and the wastewater system, uh, looking at that 3%, uh, with a, a rough budget target of around 3, 3.2 to 3.3 million using these, uh, these very, uh, very much, uh, high level planning level costs. Uh, and of course by rehabilitation, what we're talking about is, uh, that, that there would be an appropriate method to extend the life of these pipes, uh, as opposed to, uh, replacement, which is, uh, in most cases is going to be much more expensive.
So that, just so I'm clear, the first line is the total is 5% of which 3% is rehabilitation and 2% is replacement?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes. Uh, and, and these are the types of numbers that as we would get into the asset management program, uh, get into more of an inspection program that's proactive, collecting data to, to truth these numbers against. Um, we, we would certainly be able to refine these. But just to, just to give some budget, budget targets at this point. Uh, and then likewise the replacement, uh, if we assume about 2% of the system would, would need to be replaced, so, uh, that there, there would not be an appropriate rehab method, but a new, a new asset, a new pipe would need to be installed, uh, for 2% of the system. That would work out to, I believe that's about one, one and a half miles, uh, for both of the systems, uh, with a, a rough price tag of around $5 million, uh, using these planning level costs.
Is that, uh, when you talk about planning level costs like that, are you talking about, uh, I'm trying, I don't recall exactly the terminology for it, but slip lining? Is that the?
So slip lining is, is definitely a, uh, it's one of the rehab methods that we use.
Okay.
Um, along with pipe bursting, along with spray on liners, uh, cast and place pipe. There's, there's a number of them that depending on the situation are, are appropriate.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. And these are, this is just trying to, to pick a number that's, uh, you know, these prices, these unit costs would vary certainly based on the size of the pipe, uh, as well as on the type of rehab. But, um, just to, just to give a broad, a broad number, uh, we, we assign those for tonight's purposes.
On these, uh, 2% replacement, obviously this is a summary of the report. You have the, the areas obviously that they're targeted, right?
We do.
Where the 2% is?
Uh, so these numbers are, we, we did take a look at that, but these numbers are simply based on, uh, on the assumption that 2% of the system, system wide would need some type of, uh, replacement.
The, what, the reason I'm asking is we, I mean, Mike, you can correct me. In the past, we tried to coordinate it with street repair. Is that correct? So the cost would be lower and it would be less, uh, problem with the residents, you know? You close the street to replace it, you do the pipes at the same time. And that's why, you know, some of this number, it'd be nice to coordinate with the city on their capital improvement projects too.
Yes, I a hundred percent agree with you. Uh, and as part of the asset management program, that's exactly what we would do. And I'm gonna talk about that a little bit more on the next slide, but every single pipe in the system would, uh, would have a risk-based criteria. Uh, it would have a score, a rank. So we would know, yes, specifically which pipes are, uh, at the highest likelihood of failure, the highest consequence of failure.
Okay.
But we'll, I'll, I'll go into just a little more detail on that in the next slide. Uh, the last thing I wanted to mention here on this slide is the, uh, to point out this average design life table, which, uh, again, we, we could, uh, get more detailed with this, have ranges to these, but, uh, just based on half's design experience, uh, as well using some EPA and AWWA, American Water Works Association references. These are some, some rough, uh, design lives that we tend to see for these types of pipe materials. Okay. So in this proposed, uh,
Uh, one question. Do you, will you, do you have dates associated with these phases? Is that somewhere coming? Like, when is phase one?
We haven't gotten that far yet. This is just still high level. Part of, part of what he's, he's giving you all the high level understanding of what we're doing and how we're gathering all this information. The in-depth detail is gonna come out later. Once we get the water and wastewater model finalized, then he's gonna get on the backside and start plugging in the information. Anything that we might be missing that we can go out and verify in the field, our staff will go out and do so and it'll help refine it. So if you back up a slide, please?
Sure.
If you'll take a look at that column on the right, for example, you see where water valves has a design life of 30 years. So we may plug in to replace those valves twice before we replace the PVC line that it's attached to. And there's new methodology other than leak detection, acoustic testing. You can actually go in and video inspect water mains now depending on what they are. So if it were a ductal iron, caster iron, we'd go in and we'd do an actual, uh, video inspection of that line to determine the wall thickness and help us prioritize what's a potential risk or a consequence of failure top scenario. So we haven't gotten down into those depths yet. It's still pretty high level. Thank you, Matt.
Sure. You're welcome. So yes, as part of this, this phase two, which would be actually getting into the asset management program itself, uh, we would propose to implement a risk-based approach. Uh, we find that that's really the, the foundation of effective asset management programs. Uh, and that would apply to both the water and the wastewater systems. Uh, so the, uh, the tables that we're showing here, these are just some sample risk criteria that, uh, that, that we have applied to water systems in the past. We'd have a similar set of criteria, some of which would be similar to these. Some would be different for the wastewater system. Um, but we, we, we would apply those, um, to, to help us develop that relationship of the, the likelihood of failure, which is of course getting at the, the condition of the pipe, condition of the asset, when it's likely to fail. Uh, and then we also would look at the consequence of failure, which is trying to quantify the, the impact that failure of that particular asset would have, uh, on the system. And so, uh, the likelihood of failure is much more condition-based consequence, has a lot to do with the customer served, with the area, uh, where that, that asset is located. Uh, so we roll those together into the risk equation. You can see the, the expression for it there. And that allows us to assign a, a risk score as well as a risk rank to every pipe in the system. So that's, uh, kinda some, some definitions and, and how the, the risk-based approach works. Uh, typically in the, the, the first year one outcome, uh, action item, if you will, of the risk-based approach is to start conducting, uh, condition assessment, uh, inspection on the system. Uh, so the, the risk-based approach initially in that first year, it's really used to guide where that inspection should take place. Like which are the highest risk parts of the system. Uh, then as, uh, in subsequent years, as, uh, more condition assessment is performed, that data is added into the, to the system, into the program, uh, the likelihood of failure becomes based on that condition. So that replaces the, the more data-driven, uh, likelihood of failure. Other activities that would be a part of that would include smoke testing as well as, uh, leak detection and some of the other methods that Alan was, was mentioning. Uh, and I also wanted to, to note before handing it over here to Preston, that the, uh, the, the risk-based approach, the, the risk evaluation, the, the analysis, all of this that, that we're proposing would be integrated into the, um, the elements access work order system, which has these capabilities to support, uh, not only the, the work order management and all the information that, that comes along with that, but as well the, uh, the, the risk-based analysis. So this would really build on that program that's being implemented. Yes, sir.
Each of those parameters, what's the granularity? I mean, I, I see that you've got a weighted model there. Uh, are you saying a scale of like one to 100, one to 10, you know? Cause they've all gotta be paired on the same scale. So what kinda scale are we talking about there?
You're exactly right. And I'm, I'm glad you pointed that out because some people don't appreciate the scale. Uh, we typically will use a one to 10 scale.
One to 10?
Um, it, it, it doesn't really matter, but it does need to be consistent, as you say. So, so yes, each of those, uh, what we're not showing here is there's a score breakdown that's associated with each of those parameters. Uh, so, you know, age, for example, uh, we might weight the, the oldest pipes in the system, uh, with an eight or nine. Uh, the newer pipes in the system would get a one. Uh, and each, each of the parameters would have a system of scoring like that. Some of these that we're showing, uh, we just noted the, the parameter itself, but there may be multiple attributes that play into that. The public health parameter typically, uh, will involve pipe size as well as zoning. So there's, there's more to this than we're showing here today. Uh, and then the second piece is the weight. Uh, where we use that is to, uh, reflect both the confidence that we might have in that data set, uh, as well as the importance that we wanna place on it. Uh, and so, uh, working with Trophy Club Mud to, to establish what, uh, what those parameters would be number one, what the scoring would look like, what the weights would be, that's, that would be a very much a collaborative effort.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I'm gonna hand it over to Preston to talk about the master plan.
Thank you, Matt.
Good job.
Thanks, Matt, and, uh,
Questions will be later.
I certainly appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all this evening. As Matt said, I'm gonna continue on and kinda briefly give you an update on the two master plans that we've got currently going for you. And, um, I'll probably speed through this to keep us on schedule, but please, uh, fire away if you have any questions as we go along. So to start off with, let's talk about the water master plan first. Uh, so you'll see there on the screen that, uh, we've got a, a snapshot from the model software itself. We're using the Inflowater software for the, the hydraulic modeling that has all the mathematical equations built into it. It's kinda the state-of-the-art software out there for doing this kinda thing. And then, you know, capitalizing on the investments you've already made in the GIS, we've built the model asset information from that. Uh, the model takes into account all your pipe diameters, your lengths, your depths, et cetera. Uh, so that's coming from the GIS to help populate that software. Roughly, we've got around 800 nodes, which represent a junction in the piping system. Whether either two pipes come together or you may have a valve. We've got approximately 960 conduits, which represents the pipelines between those nodes or junctions. And an important step to using a model like this is to calibrate it to real-world conditions. And so, uh, we actually had information from the fire department that we were able to use. Uh, they normally do a lot of fire hydrant testing through the town. And so we use some of that information to help calibrate the model. And, uh, that's just hot off the presses. We were able to achieve a satisfactory calibration, uh, last week actually. And so what I've got to share with you tonight is a couple of, uh, early screenshots from the model, the calibrated model results. And these are kinda two flashpoint areas that we always try to focus in on, um, you know, what your, uh, maximum velocities are in the system. And the next slide will be about pressures. So I apologize. I know you probably can't make out these colors too well, but the, uh, uh, each conduit or pipeline is color-coded. Uh, most of them are colored red, which means they're less than two feet per second in velocity. There's a few out there that are green, which is in the two to 10-foot, uh, uh, sector. And just, I think one or two around the pump station that are over 10 feet per second. So normally you wanna be in that sweet spot of somewhere between two to 10 feet per second. In this situation, we're not modeling a, uh, a fire flow or a maximum event. Uh, so I think when we do model that, you'll see some of these velocities increase above the two feet per second. The disadvantage to having a low velocity, uh, well, first off, the advantage is that you're saving money on pumping costs. The disadvantage potentially is that that could lead to some, um, some older, uh, or, or increased age in your water system. The older the water is, generally that chlorine residual will drop off over time. So that's certainly something, uh, that we'll be looking at as a next step. The model allows you to do a aged water simulation, so we'd be focused and make sure there's no issues with that. Uh, and I should point out that the district is, you know, had the foresight to include their own disinfection capabilities. So even as the water comes in from Fort Worth, it's got a certain age to it. It may sit in your system for a certain amount of time. You have the ability to increase that or boost that chlorine into the disinfection level. Now this one, as I mentioned, is for the high pressures. So again, to kinda orient yourself, um, let's see. I think it's the purple color that's the really low, uh, PSI's, uh, below 40% or, excuse me, 40 PSI. The sweet spot you wanna be in is anywhere from the 40 to 80. So that's the, uh, the green, the blue or the yellow dots. Then the red dots are the high pressures, uh, that's 80 to 90 PSI. So there's a problem with low pressure. Um, the state requires you normally to have at least 35 PSI. If you get below that, you have the chance of having water coming back into, uh, the pipe, which can cause to, uh, can some contamination. And of course, if you get too high a pressure, that could start to cause problem either with your public system or the private system. So you kinda wanna keep between that 40 to 80 to 90 PSI. So again, at least at this initial run that we've looked at, you're in that sweet spot. You see some, uh, higher pressures to the north, and I think that follows because that's, as you get closer to the lake, you're going down in elevation. So your pressure's gonna rise a little bit as you get in lower elevation.
Mike, all those are the pits, aren't they? The majority of those reds?
Uh, I believe in that, that, that northern other area, yes. So again, these are just hot off the presses from our, our recently calibrated water model. Uh, we're gonna be using that now in the next steps. Uh, we're gonna be looking at an ultimate build-out condition and also looking at those fire flow demands. Uh, that's something that we'll be battling with the, uh, the software and see if we see any addition, additional issues with either flow velocities or pressures. Then based on that, we'll look at some alternatives to help improve that as well as some potential improvements to help us on the efficiency of the operation. Maybe ways to potentially save a little money on pumping costs. And we'll, we'll fold those all, all into a prioritized capital improvement project, uh, plan, which I should point out that, uh, could be something that can be further prioritized by the asset management plan that we're talking about doing as well. In addition to that, and of course this becomes even more timely after, uh, winter storm Uri, um, we'll be considering some additional steps to increase the resiliency of your water supply. Obviously you get your water from Fort Worth. You have your groundwater wells to back that up. But maybe it makes sense to, uh, tie into a neighboring, uh, community system to provide another emergency connection just in case, so.
If they don't, and if they run out, we're in trouble. Or there's problems with them.
Yes. Uh, hopefully, uh, the more bullets you've got in that holster, one of them will come true, kinda thing. So, uh, we're just trying to increase those number of bullets. And then last but not least, uh, you know, there's a program that TCQ has that recognizes some top quality water systems in the state. Uh, staff has been looking at that and I, I think they've been performing at a level that would allow them to qualify for, to qualify for this. So there is a process. You have to go through a lot of paperwork to be filled out, so, uh, we'll be working with staff to apply for that, uh, recognition. So that's the water side. On the wastewater side, um, a big focus there is gonna be on your lift stations. The, the district has 10 lift stations. Uh, I was just kinda looking at this today. Uh, you know, you have 10 lift stations in your 85 miles of pipe. The city of Fort Worth has approximately 10 lift stations and they're 3,000 miles of pipe. Why is that? Well, they were lucky enough or fortunate enough to locate their treatment plant where all the water or wastewater goes to at the far downstream end of their city. If you didn't know better, you would think it's in Arlington. Uh, and unfortunately the low part in your system is in the middle of Lake Grapevine, which is not a great place to put a wastewater treatment plant. So to get around the topography around a lake, there's a lot, a lot of advantages of living close to a lake. Having a wastewater system there is not one of them. Uh, so that's why over the years you've had to develop so many lift stations for such a relatively small system. So the first thing we've done is taken a look at, uh, at the nine largest lift stations and do what's called a drawdown test, where we got actually a measure, uh, how quickly, uh, you know, over time, what the drop of the wet well level is as the pumps are running. This is a check for the health, if you will, of those pumps. Uh, pumping wastewater is very difficult business. It wears the pumps out very quickly, much more quickly than you would with, uh, regular water. And so, um, on the right-hand side, you can see our percentages that we've, uh, determined so far. Some of them are doing great. You know, those that are well over 50% are in great shape. But there may be a few that will work with Mike to, uh, make sure the last time those impellers were checked. It might be time to replace an impeller or two on some of those pump stations. So that was the first thing we've looked at. We're now moving into, uh, a, a step where we're gonna consider if there are any lift stations we can remove from the system. Uh, as mentioned, it's kinda hard to pump, uh, wet, uh, wastewater flows. Uh, it's expensive. And so if we can remove even one lift station from the system, uh, over time, that's gonna pay for itself. And so we're basically concentrated in this kind of, uh, eastern portion of the system. And you can kinda make out there from the map, those, the heat map there shows the elevations in this area. The lighter colors are higher. The darker colors are lower as you head towards the lake. lake. And so, that's an important factor when you're looking to eliminate lift stations. So this is very preliminary, but so far, our best candidates are shown here on this table. So potentially, we could get a plan together that might eliminate lift station one, two, three, or four. Across the top there, you'll see some of the major considerations we're doing that are basically the requirements to see if a plan is feasible. You kind of need that elevation driver so you can promote gravity flow versus the pump flow that you have now. But you can't make those gravity lines too deep because they're hard to build, they're expensive to build, they're expensive to maintain. And then, in certain cases, you may have to upsize downstream facilities, either the pipelines you're going to tie into, you're putting more flow to those now, or in some cases, there may be a downstream lift station you'd have to upsize, and accordingly, also it's force mending. So the costs can add up as you look to eliminate a lift station. So this is, again, very preliminary, but on the right-hand side, you can see that right now, we feel like that plan of eliminating lift station four is probably going to be most feasible. I know the district is really hoping we can find a way to remove lift station one. So it's still in the running there, but we've got some work to do to see how much that may cost to eliminate it.
What does the plan feasibility, what do the numbers represent?
One is best, six is worst.
Okay.
So it's, one is most feasible.
Where is lift, I know where lift station one's at. Where's lift station four? Remind me.
Off of Dover.
Dover by us.
Back there by the wastewater plant.
Okay, or by us, right? So one right around the corner.
Kind of make it out there on the map, just a little bit east of the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay.
So on your slides a few back, you said nine lift stations, and you didn't include the one at the treatment plant, or?
No, these are the ones that are out in the collection system.
It says right there, nine lift stations.
Well, there's actually 10. We tested nine of them.
Okay. That's just wanting to keep referring to 10, and I know there's 10.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, the Trophy 20, we did not test. It's a lot smaller than the other ones, and I think it would be pretty impossible to remove that one, unfortunately. So, next steps on the master plan, as mentioned, we'll continue on the lift station elimination task and further flesh out those components to make it feasible, if possible. And those that we can, we'll develop those into a CIP once again, and further, that can be further prioritized by the asset management plan that we're talking about doing. And then, of course, we'll document all our findings in our report. And presumably, if you're interested, we would certainly like to come back at the time we finish both the water and wastewater master plans and go over the findings in more detail at that time. So I know that was a lot of information in a short amount of time. Any other questions we can address this evening?
On, it's more Matt's presentation, did you, was the Westlake lines in there too, in that report? Okay.
Yes, everything's in there.
Everything in the district, then. Okay, thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, moving on. Item five, number five, consider an act to adopt rate order number 20, whoops.
Four.
Missed four? Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Good, thank you, Mark. Discussion and possible action regarding winter average analysis completed by NewGen Strategies and Solutions.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. Chris Sekret with NewGen Strategies and Solutions. It's a pleasure to be with you again, even in this distanced environment. We do this every year in March. We come and we talk about winter averaging. So when you bill for sewage on your system, it is based on a winter average water use. We're in a unique period this year when we look at winter average water use, based on COVID and the shutdowns we've seen, based on the recent snowpocalypse that we've been through. I think I've told you this before, there is no such thing as normal weather in Texas. We have not had normal, and so that obviously impacts the calculations that we look at this year. So as I understand it, the board has already talked about this, has already looked at, basically throwing out February 2021 from the winter average. We went through that analysis and looked at that, but when you have three data points in an average, and you take one data point out, you get some very interesting results. So as we looked at that, we came in, working with staff, we decided to go ahead for purposes of tonight and bring back in February of last year. Bring back in three data points into the winter average because it made more sense. The results were more logical than just having two data points in the average. Again, I don't think that's going to impact the results significantly as we go through this presentation tonight, but we can talk about that a little bit. What we were seeing by just using two data points, we were starting to see some significant swings in individual winter averages. So by bringing in February, it tended to normalize things out a little bit more, but we'll dig into those details here shortly. Again, you want to jump in there?
Just real quick, so we can say, so it's not going to impact what the average per customer individually is. This is strictly for revenue calculation going forward.
Yes, that is correct. That is correct.
Did you give it default to residents that weren't here last year?
Yes, the default is 7,000.
Like if someone just moved in, then you didn't have an average last year?
It would go back to the default. That's correct.
7,000. 7,000 is the average default, yeah.
Okay.
That's correct. So as we look at those numbers, basically, for residential, what we're seeing is that the winter average did increase. You can see on a per-account average basis, it increased from 6,017 to 6,195. Again, we are using February, and there's some slight difference. What we've seen on the commercial side is very different. Commercial has gone down.
I'm sorry, just to clarify again, you used February of last year for that calculation?
That's correct.
Okay.
We're using February for this calculation.
I'm clear.
That is absolutely correct. Commercial builds, so, excuse me, commercial build sewer volume has gone down. That is to be expected because as we looked at those commercial accounts, that includes schools, that includes restaurants, it includes a number of entities that have been shut down or are operating at lower capacities. So that's, again, is to be expected. Plant flow has decreased, not quite as much as we would anticipate with the commercial coming down, but plant flow has decreased. But again, it is important to note some of those timing differentials as we look at that. As we get into actual numbers, you see the numbers on the screen again. Residential has gone up, commercial has gone down, plant flow has gone down. We would have expected to see, when you add this up on a net basis, you would have expected residential not to go up this much. Again, we have some timing differences, but also, we still have some people that water in the winter. And so, if you water in the winter, it does drive up the winter average. That's not necessarily going to correlate with plant flow. That's why you see some of those differences on this slide. So with that being said, we, yes, sir?
Could it also be that people are staying home, so they're using more water at home?
It very well could be that they're also staying home. Yes.
You know, just because they're not going to the restaurants and that stuff, they're doing it.
That is.
Go to the bathroom?
Yeah. I wasn't going to go there, but.
But that being said, again, I will emphasize, you have some residents that water in the winter.
Yeah.
So it is, it is a phenomenon that we do see. But as we looked at the calculations this year, we basically ran two scenarios. One, where the board would take no action. You would leave rates as they are right now. The impact of that is there would be no change to the customer bill, residential or commercial. There may potentially be slightly higher revenues for the utility at the end of the year than what we planned, potentially. And we'll talk about that potential here in just a second. The alternative scenario would be a slight decrease in residential rates, basically five cents on the volumetric rate going down. The commercial rate would have to go up more substantially, and we'll look at those impacts. So what is driving this? Part of the driver here, again, is you see how we are allocating between residential and commercial. With commercial coming down as much as it is, one thing we're seeing is a reallocation of the revenue requirement. We need to generate $1.4 million over the remainder of the year in the volumetric rate, but because of those flow changes that we've seen, we're actually shifting the allocation away from commercial to residential. That's about a 4% change. Allocation, it's a balloon. You squeeze it one place, it pops out someplace else. However, we have just now gone into a period where commercial businesses are allowed to reopen. So we can't say that this is going to continue over the remainder of this year. This is one of the reasons why we ran the scenario of not making any changes, because we don't know what's going to happen over the coming months as businesses reopen, as we start to see those flows return. So again, if you're interested in how we get to the 1.4 million, we look at what you've already generated, we estimate fixed charges through the end of the year, we come in, we look at what revenue is needed, that's how we back into that 1.48 that we're trying to hit through the remainder of the year, and that just shows those calculations on the screen. So with that, again, on the residential side, if we were going to flow this through, you've got two options. One, you see the current rates there, the 410, all the way up to the 1175. If we did not change anything, and we're under this winter average, effectively, we might over-recover by a little under $11,000 over the remainder of the year. If we did go ahead and make the adjustment, which is about a five-cent adjustment down on all the volumetric rates, you're basically breaking even on the residential side. But what that's going to mean for a resident, at 5,000 gallons, they're going to save a quarter a month. You'll recall the slide earlier where we had the average, winter average was about 6,000 gallons. You're going to be about 30 cents a month savings for your average resident within the town. As you get to those higher winter averages, for example, if you're watering in the winter, your bill would potentially have a difference there. It's really going to depend on how your winter average were to swing. But again, at the top rate there, we're talking $1.25 reduction a month in the bill at the very top rate.
I can't see that, because I think it's hidden. What's the number?
At the 25,000 gallons, it's $1.25. It goes from 247.70 to 246.45 would be the difference in the bill.
That's the one I was looking at.
So again, it's the current rates in the one column, the reduction, the scenario in the other column.
Yeah.
But I do want to compare that to what happens to our commercial customers, because we are going to, if we reduce residential, we have to go up on commercial to generate the same level of revenue. And so, commercial would have to go from $6.94 to $7.41. Now, you heard me say earlier, there's a potential we would generate more revenue, but on a net basis, if commercial stayed exactly the same, we would actually lose money if we left the commercial rate the same. We would lose approximately 21,000 against a gain of about 10,000 on residential. But the reason we're anticipating potentially more money is with the reopening of businesses, that flow being returned back to the system. Obviously, we're anticipating those bills to be higher. But again, if we come in and adjust that rate, it would go from 6.94 to 7.41. And while that 5,000-gallon residential customer would go down by a quarter, we would see a 5,000-gallon commercial customer go up $2.35 a month. And so, you can begin to see those impacts there at the varying levels. So again, given the uncertainties.
Can you go back? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
So where do the bulk of the commercial customers fall in that chart?
I believe, I believe most of them are going to fall around the 10,000-gallon mark. That's subject to check. I'd have to verify that, but you're going to be at the lower end. You don't have a lot of commercial customers that get up to the top end of the chart. So again, it's our recommendation, given the uncertainties, given what's happened, given that we may see this flow allocation restored as we get through the rest of the year, we'd recommend that you just hold tight at this time. Leave rates as they are, don't adjust anything, but then, as we come in and get through the rate study again, we're going to have recommendations coming in October, how we implement your master plans, how we look at the allocation of cost. We recommend that you just hold tight right now and potentially look at a change coming in October of this year with adoption of next year's budget. You do have the potential to adjust rates if you want to, but we just recommend that you hold tight. Yes, sir?
Chris, I was trying to remember from previous year adjustments while we're doing winter averaging, about the ratio between commercial and residential. And I don't remember that moving by about 0.2%.
It's never moved as much as we've seen it move this year.
It just stays nice and tight.
Yes, sir.
So from, I mean, from what you've shown and what I see is, I'm inclined to leave it where it is, simply because I think that this entire last year has been an anomaly.
Yes.
And I think that things are going to come back, and they'll be back about the same ratio as we had before.
Yeah, we were a little surprised when we saw that 4% swing. We've never seen it that big before.
I mean, that's 4%, it's, I mean, it's not real, I don't see that as realistic.
Right.
If I'd lost a bunch of, I mean, seriously, if a bunch of businesses really closed and weren't going to be there the rest of the year, well, now you're looking at something that's real. But I think the economy's coming back now, and I think it's probably going to be back like it was before, and the ratios will reestablish very close to what they were before.
Well, the other thing, too, is I have a bit of a heartburn with businesses coming back, just trying to get back, you know, survive, and oh, by the way, we're going to whack your rates a little bit. It's not a lot of money, I get it, but that's the last thing I think businesses need.
You know, I always push on as transparent and fair. But I look, I look at this and go, that's not, I understand, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into it, but from my perspective, what you're doing is validating the abnormal.
What you were saying is you're against raising the commercial rates when you said?
I'm in favor of keeping it just like it is.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the numbers and take winter average for, as it's supposed to be, the commercial usages come down and the residential's come up, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and I agree with Bill that, and I think Mark added that, too, is you have more residents at home, more people using water and toilets and things like that. So it's kind of a, you know, unique situation last year, and if we just keep what we have and not change anything, as you mentioned, reevaluate later in the year as businesses come, you know, get more customers and things like that, then we get a true reading of what it is.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, Mark.
My point of view is also, like you said, these commercial customers are trying to get their legs back up under them and start, you know, serving the community again. I think slapping them with an increased charge is just, you know, it's counterproductive for the community and us. I would say the same thing.
But if you go to, if you go to the actual allocation, the rates really would have gone down because they're using less, not go up, but you had to go up to make up the revenue and stuff, and I, you know, there's no reason to penalize them when their usage went down. You're supposed to be going off the actual allocation. But in this year, you can throw that allocation out the window.
I would leave alone.
Yeah, that's where I'm at. I leave, I know, to me, it's an anomaly.
I don't know that we need to, nope, sorry, go ahead.
We also had to fudge, we had to do a fudge, too.
So let's go to, yeah, so actually, that leads into number five.
If you, if you still have questions or anything you want to discuss with Chris, that would be item number four.
Yeah, how you been doing, Chris?
I'm doing well. It's, it's actually, it's nice to be back in front of you. It's nice to be back out of the office.
Nice to see you.
I've not been on a plane since last March, and it's killing me, so it's good to be here.
It's nice to see a lot of folks here tonight. It was good.
Pardon?
On a plane, I thought you were local.
I am local, but I also travel a lot, so it's, it's just, it's, it's been a tough year.
I know of a corporate jet in Austin that's not used. Maybe, you know.
Number four is to discuss and possible action, so.
But five is where we're going to actually take the action.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you, Chris. Great job, as always.
Thanks, Chris.
So item five, then, is to consider an act to adopt a rate order number 2021-0315, establishing policies, procedures, rates, fees, and charges for the water and sewer services.
I don't think, I don't think we have any action on that if we're not intending to change it. I think we just leave them in effect.
Okay.
Well, we can, you know, direct them to say, continue use the last year's rate. So. Well, we can, you know, direct them to say, continue use last year's rate, so it's in the books that we didn't change anything, or say, make a motion not to change the rate.
Might want to make it official.
That could be a legal question if we need to do it.
Tony, did you hear the discussion?
I did, and unless your current rate order references a date period, I don't think any actions required in it, and the current rates will stay in effect.
Yeah, it just says we'll evaluate it every year in April.
Number five was in place in the event y'all decided to go with a different scenario.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. So no change.
No change.
Nope.
Thank you, Tony. Six, discussion and possible action regarding customer disconnections and late fees.
So I wanted to bring to the board's attention, on February 21st, the PUC issued an order for disconnects and non-payments for commercial industries, which included electric businesses, water, wastewater, gas, that there would be no disconnection or non-payment fees due to the winter weather. So when we originally saw this come across, it was talking about any water or wastewater, it didn't matter, we were part of that. So we went ahead and held off because we weren't sure if we fell under that or not. After the fact, we got, further clarification was sent out that districts and municipalities were not affected by this. So what I want to do is make y'all aware of this, mainly because I know that when the COVID hit last year, the district made the decision to delay any disconnects or non-payment late fees. So we don't see there being a great impact, and we have very few people who are behind or in arrears or potentially going to be cut off. And we have a few that we're still continuously working with to try to make sure we don't ever get to that point. So I just wanted to bring this to y'all's attention and find out, is this something y'all want us to even consider moving forward, or are we going to continue business as is? It was more of an informational request from y'all.
Well, my understanding is that we came out of that mode, I can remember the motion, I mean, we're not wrong in that mode.
We did, back in August, we came out of it. This is another PUC order based off of the winter weather that was issued on February 21st.
I thought this was a 21-
The order Bill's referencing related to COVID, and as Alan indicates, immediately after the storm event, the PUC commissioners adopted a different order prohibiting disconnects and late fees. And frankly, they made a mistake in their first order by including language that would make it applicable to districts, and they clarified that subsequently.
The documents I have here is March 26, 2020, and says that it's been, the disconnections expired on June 20th, 2020. I'm in year 2021.
That information was put in there in error. That was not intended. That was the previous order by the board, that's no longer in effect.
Yes.
That was in error.
Okay.
It wasn't meant to be in this-
So there's a new one that needed, should have been in the packet?
There's a, no, there's a new one that was issued. We don't follow under it.
Oh.
And so, we delayed because we weren't sure at the time, and we were fixing to do disconnects, so we went ahead and made the decision to hold off. We're bringing it to your attention to find out, do you want to consider implementing this until they lift this order? It doesn't relate to us, and we don't follow under this order. We don't necessarily need to, I was just looking to see if the board wanted to do the same type of scenario as was done last year during the COVID event.
I guess my view is not, two things, we don't fall under the need to do it or the legality to do it, but more importantly, I mean, I think you just said there's not a lot of folks that are falling into this category, and the, you know, the staff has the ability, you know, right, one-on-one to work with customers and deal with them all the time, which you guys do every day.
Correct.
Yes, there is currently, the reason why this is on here, so there were six people still remaining from the original, when the board originally set the payment plan for six months of pay, that expired in February 28th. We had the winter storm the week before that, which means then they would have been disconnected had they not caught up on their agreement for the six-month payment plan. So there is now five customers that are still, are still being paid, are still making payments on this payment plan here, that since we did postpone disconnects for one month, we just, we did, did not do any disconnects in March, which would have been last week, this allows them to have additional months to finish out their payment plan.
If you disconnected them, they probably wouldn't have had the water line breaks.
True.
But would have went after the fact.
Well, it was more of a transparency for me, it was really related more to electrical providers, that they couldn't assess late fees or disconnect because they knew that there were going to be elevated electric costs. I just want to be transparent with y'all, let you know that it did come out, it doesn't affect us, wanted to give you all the option, if you wanted to make any changes, how we operate, we can do so. We don't necessarily see a need to, we think that everything is okay here, but we'll want to look for that direction.
Okay.
Now, let's not make Stephen's life any more complicated than it is today.
Very well, we agree. I'm here for you.
Disconnect numbers actually went up last month, didn't they, the 26? I was on the report.
But we have disconnect notices.
They're what?
20 to 30 people a month.
We actually, so, we just ran it in March, it was actually 105. Now, granted, we did do disconnects this time, but there was actually 105 that would have been on the list.
Really?
Hmm. That would have been, so this would be right after, because disconnects, you know, they do happen the month before, so if February would have happened, beginning of February, we're looking at March, and I believe the date was March 9th, I believe is the right date for disconnect. So that would have been 105 on that list.
Yeah, the staff, it's, the disconnects are in the reports section, if I remember right.
But that's for February, so that would have been the beginning of February. So the one we postponed would have been the beginning of March, which would have been March 9th, I believe is the, was the date.
Let me get this right, we're not charging any penalties or added costs for disconnects or?
So just for, just for this one. There is a $50 fee for disconnects. We postponed, as staff, we postponed.
Just this month, due to that PUC order coming out, we're going to go back to normal processes next month.
Okay.
Which allow, as we were talking about, which allowed the six citizens that are on the payment plan an additional month to pay off their balance before they would be disconnected.
Okay. Okay. And the question- Other than that, the payment plan for those folks who were impacted previously, the payment plan for those folks that were impacted previously has worked out well.
I'm sorry?
Yes, yes. Yes, it has.
Okay.
We still have a few that are remaining, but they're still making efforts, doing what they can, and staff has been working with them to continue that effort, yes.
Yes, majority have been paid or at least has gotten the balance a little bit lower that is manageable. And we're still working with them, letting them know each month to keep up with and be proactive with us, as you told Billy.
Great job, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Alan. Item seven, discussion and possible actions regarding district mission, vision, and goals questionnaire results. Alan, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, so during our January budget workshop, the discussion of vision, mission, and goals was brought up and determined, so what was directed by staff was to reach out and come up with the questions asked to each individual staff member, give them the opportunity to acquire feedback from each individual, trying to determine what they felt was the district's vision, the district's mission, and the district's goals moving forward. So what we did is we populated a general statement of what each one of these items generally is, and we also provided them examples to try to give them some sort of understanding of what we were looking for. This was an anonymous survey that our HR individual populated, put together, sent out, reached out to each employee. We got 13 out of 20 responses. On the goals portion, we got 11 out of 13 responses. So some good feedback, minimal feedback. So I believe it was roughly two weeks ago, I'd sent it out to each director, asking you all to take a look at the responses, highlight, provide me any feedback that you felt was worth at least using as a starting point, or what you felt might be a basis to give you all somewhere to start. So what I did is I only had two directors respond to me directly, so I compiled what they responded with, and this is the information that the directors provided, based off of what the employees originally provided. So what we're looking for now is the direction, do we continue to work down this path with what we've collected? Do we go down a different route? What do you all recommend? What do you like to see? What do you think?
Yep.
Well, I probably, I probably gave the general manager more information than he wanted.
Really?
Yeah, I was one of the directors that responded. There was a lot of red on the sheet. So anyway, long story short, I went out and grabbed a couple of organizations that have done this. I looked at DC, Washington DC Water, they have a, they have a system, they have, it's all flowed out. And I also looked at SaaS, which is the San Antonio Water System, which is another well, large organization, well put together from my perspective. And I sent the general manager the links to those two sites, and we had a conversation. And I said, if you really want to do this easy, we just take those sheets and get out the magic marker and cut and paste what we like and what we don't like, and make changes where we think changes need to be done, and the project's complete. Now, there's a problem with that approach, and the problem with that approach is buy-in. And so I didn't, it burns up a bunch of your caller, copier account to print those pages out, but I think that that, I mean, if you're looking for an alternate way to go, that's the way we could go. And then we would, I would suggest that we go back to the staff, especially for a core values discussion, to make sure that the core values fit, fit the organization, and we could have the actual vision discussion probably at the board level.
The one thing I saw, reading it, was it's referring to water, we do water and wastewater. Where you say, like, one says, providing safe drinking water, every drop counts. When providing service to residents, every customer counts. It should be water and wastewater, there's two parts of that, not just water.
Yeah, I mean, that's looking, that's looking at these, and you don't, you didn't get the red copy, the red line copy.
The other one is referring to Trophy Club, we have, you know, you have to expand it, so you probably caught that too.
Yeah. Yeah, I had, personally had comments on each one of them. You have to do an open records request to get it.
But I mean, it's a good start.
Do you all feel like there's enough here to continue going? Do you want to try to select some? What's, what do you feel are the next steps?
Would it make any sense to, like, I know we got this from staff, all right? Have them rank them or vote on them?
I think there's a process, I think there's a, I won't say process, I think there's a big picture issue with this. And I think there's also an understanding issue with this, in being able to, understanding, one, about the scope of it, and then understanding the differentiations of the different levels. And I think that's something that, to be quite honest, unless you sat down and probably do a mini-study with folks, you can't achieve that. And I tell you, personally having been through it before, you may have, you sit and you may be doing some brainstorming, and you go, that's a great idea, but it doesn't go here, it goes there.
Right.
And you kind of, and it has to be done nicely, otherwise you shut the group down. But I've seen, you know, I've been through that experience, and so it's a case of looking at things and say, that's a great comment, you take this out, you take your sentence here, cut this out, that goes away, this particular part here is excellent, and it doesn't go, vision, mission, that's an objective. And so-
I mean, what's here in the mission statement is a very good start. And I'm, like, if you take three and four, and somehow combine those together, and I'm looking at specifically the mission statement right now, number three addresses the water and wastewater services at the best overall value, that's a good one there. And then we deliver to meeting customers' needs, you could take what's in some of the, four, excuse me, is it four? Yeah, four, I'm talking about three and four. And four, where the transparency, I like that in billing and excellent customer service, I like that last statement. So I think you can take what's here, and, you know, someone like Alan or, you know, Lori can take it and take what's good in certain areas, combining it to one.
Yeah, I mean, I hear what you're saying. I mean, you're saying a little, a little bit of the same thing twice, although you could take key pieces of it.
Right.
Truth in billing is paramount.
You want transparency, you want, you know, the truth in billing, I mean, you hear that, oh, we're trying to rob people because we overbuild them, or our software is off or something like that. And they don't realize it's all electronic and the heads, water goes through there, it's very little, you know, it's not rocket science. So if you take some of these, I just, three and four just kind of stuck out, where if you take the, has to, addresses the water and wastewater, addresses transparency in four, and then excellence in customer service, I like that.
That's down in the, down in the mission section, when you say three and four, or-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is, in my experience, what I thought, what I like in the training that I had is, in the vision statement, you're looking for something that's probably six words or less. You want to be able to put that in your pocket, put it on your hand, walk up, put it on a wall, and say, that's it, that's us, that's the big picture, that's, it's like when you look at Trophy Club, a great place to call home. It's something that's true yesterday, true today, and true tomorrow. You can look at, it's a timeless, it's a timeless statement. And so, and you can always, always reach to it.
But that's not a mission statement.
That's a vision, though. That's a vision.
Vision, now, mission is how you get to vision.
Right.
And so, mission statements are longer. I mean, if you do, you do a real good one, you're talking about two sentences probably, but two sentences that are well-developed and very impactful.
Which three and four, we could create that into two sentences.
Yeah.
Restructure them, that would be simple to do.
The vision, as Bill said, I mean, it's like, short and concise, something that pops, and that's it, you know, I just sit and go, and then, and then, and then, and then, and then, and then.
And I guess going back up to vision, you know, is there a similar vision out of what was provided there? You know, Director Rose provided refreshing water with a smile. Is there anything else that you all can think that you all feel?
Again, it's good, but we're water and wastewater.
Well, but see, when we talk about water, when we talk about wastewater, when I say refreshing water with a smile, that wastewater plant down there is refreshing our water. It's cleaning it. What's going back is being cleaned. And so, we're refreshing, that plant is a refreshing operation.
Well, maybe you could also say exceptional service, water, wastewater service with a smile, you know, you can, you can combine it and go those directions too.
Yeah. And when I say with, smile to me is important because it's not only the staff smiling, but the customers, but the customers are smiling because they're happy with the product they're getting, and they understand that they're getting it at a fair value. And good service.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I apologize for not getting back to you.
Pores.
I just, one of the things I wanted to point out is the number three under vision, that looks to me more like a mission statement.
Yeah.
I read through it, that looks like more, it belongs more under a mission statement, and it's a very appropriate mission statement, far as I can tell, it covers all the points.
Yeah, it's thorough.
I think that, that one would be an excellent mission statement, that number three under vision.
Good.
And I agree with you on keep it short, simple for the vision. I like number one as well.
Only problem with three, I mean, it's too lengthy under the vision, and it does fall more into the mission, but number three, it's like, you need to take out half the words in there. Because, you know, within our boundaries, just say the district, done.
I scratched that one. But yeah, I mean, you could edit it and make it just as effective.
I mean, but again, if I had to look at that, three and four just stuck up, that's my, stuck out on the mission, you can include some of the things, like he said, you know, take portions of these and make two sentences.
But this is good because now we've already narrowed it down to where we have two possible mission statements. So what I can do is take number three, move it down to the mission column, we can take three and four and combine that together, reword those, that gives you two options as a mission statement.
Yep, perfect.
Okay?
Yeah.
Does everybody kind of agree with that?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Oh, uh, yeah.
Now.
I'd like to go back and pull the two units that I mentioned, take a look at those, and do like comparison across from, uh, DC Water.
I, I can send that information out to them, but.
They're sewer too. What, uh, DC is water and sewer.
I can send them all that, that link, to show them what, what sections you're talking about. But I think that this is a very, uh, a very good direction. We're, we're getting somewhere now.
On the one you mentioned, refreshing water with a smile, can you not go water service with something? Then that water service, that would pretty much cover wastewater and water, wouldn't it, Mike?
Yeah, it can. Is this what we do? We provide water services. Whether it's water, wastewater, some entities provide stormwater, so it all kind of depends.
I had, I had originally thought clean water with a smile, but it just didn't quite have a crisp feeling to it, so that's why I went with refreshing. I, that also, refreshing also brings in the environmental aspect in the mud, which a lot of people don't appreciate and don't understand, that there's a reason that we're under TCEQ. And it's environmental quality.
I have one comment under goals that I wrote down. The, it was the very first one, making sure any issues with the residents are handled quickly and in a professional way, resulting in a hundred percent customer satisfaction. First, I'm glad that's number one, because that's what we talk about again and again and again.
Well, it's service, and it's our job.
True. My discomfort is with a hundred percent customer satisfaction. That's not gonna happen. I know it's a goal. I, I get that. But when we are talking about dealing with customers, a lot of them are water-related things that we are not gonna make an adjustment. They're like, their water bill.
A hundred percent satisfaction makes it an objective, because it's something you measure.
I, I, I get that, Bill, but it's unrealistic in my view. Here's what I would rather, I would rather put the word unsurpassed, because that's measurable. We say, what does unsurpassed mean? Well, we can, we can monitor ourselves, or gauge ourselves versus other districts, other, there is, there is, there's data out there that we can do it. Just putting a hundred percent, I just, it, it's a goal that we're never gonna get to, and it, it's.
It's a tough.
It's a tough one.
Well, and, if we could.
It's unachievable, yeah.
If we can go back to the vision portion, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll come back to that real, real fast. From the vision perspective, so I'm, I'm hearing clean water with a smile, uh, refreshing water services with a smile. Do we have any other recommendations that we can populate, and maybe just?
I mean, no offense to anybody, but I just don't like the word refreshing.
What, what do you feel, what do you feel would be, what's your recommendation?
I don't have one off the top of my head. I mean, but I, it, refreshing, it's, it, um.
You could always do responsible, um, you know.
You can do that.
Quality water services.
I'd put superior quality then, just put the work quality in there, if you're gonna put superior.
I was thinking of the ranking that we get, where we have superior.
Okay.
Water services.
Uh, I, I, I wanna avoid the word.
Services is good, with a smile, right? You agree with the smile or not?
I don't smile when I drink water. I smile, like, anyway.
Well, that's a whole nother discussion.
Over, uh, what, what was it you had, Mark? You had something?
I was thinking, we, uh, there's, we've got signs at the, at the edges of town saying we are su- superior water. So why don't we say superior water?
Water services?
I think.
That ties it in with the signs and that stuff.
And we're working towards the outstanding, and I, I feel confident that we'll be able to reach that.
Or maybe outstanding, at whatever the highest ranking.
We can modify that once we receive that.
Yeah, but we could, no, I, it's a vision. It's a vision, so you can put it there. You can say outstanding water service with a smile.
If, if that's the, the highest ranking we can get, I'd say put that as our vision.
As our vision?
Yeah.
I'd agree with that, Mark.
And, and the thing about it is, is once you achieve that rating, keep it. It's like, yeah.
So outstanding water service with a smile.
Yep, and that, I mean, I think of things like.
I don't like smile.
You don't like a smile? Well, what would you say?
Um, I like the superior twist on it. Um, and then you could probably put something, you know, quality cost, or something like that, or, uh.
That's a, that would be a mission.
Right?
I think when you hit, when you say, I, you could just say outstanding water service is the vision. I like, I like the smile because I like the, the positive aspect in it.
You could also take that unsurpassed.
Say that again?
You could also throw in unsurpassed if you wanted.
Uh.
You could say unsurpassed, superior water services.
It's too ver, too, that's, no.
I don't like that. I don't like the word unsurpassed.
I like, I like, I can go with your outstanding water service. I like with a smile, because I, to me, that's an important factor of.
You take out, you take outstanding or superior?
I'm going with outstanding, because that's the ranking, the right way, that's the achievement.
We're trying to get to.
Trying to, trying, there's a level above superior. It's outstanding.
Outstanding's higher than superior?
Yes, it is in the, it is with the ranking that we're trying to achieve, the TCEQ, uh, ranking.
Is outstanding.
Excellence.
With excellence? With integrity?
I like that one.
I like integrity too.
You could say with integrity, because that's truly what we're trying to build here, is doing the right thing when people aren't looking.
With integrity, that sounds like a good.
Outstanding water service with integrity.
Done.
Can I put a fist in there too?
That's pretty good.
Sounds good.
I can do that. Yeah. I like smiled, because I want the positive, the positive truth.
No, with integrity. I better write it down.
I like that.
Negative, I'm the Grinch.
Yeah, I know. Trying to turn the perspective.
Okay, moving on.
Okay, so we'll, uh, narrow down the mission statement to the two that y'all talked about. We'll try to rework, reword that a little bit. We're going back to the goals, so, um, number three, number three, what, what I would look, like to find out is what you all feel. If we can come up with five, that's fine. If not, if we can at least have a good three or four. Um, we can define these later. I'm just trying to get the actual goals themselves. So if you look at number three, we know that our customer satisfaction, our financial responsibility, system resiliency, and asset management are what we're working towards.
Transparency, and they're relaxed transparency.
You want transparency instead of responsibility?
No.
No, just, uh.
The, uh, did you go pull some of these out of those, out of SARS or someplace? No? Because some of these look.
Some of these come from some individuals that, with great ideas.
Well, good. I'm, I'm impressed, yeah. It's Mike saying, or you, you did it.
Transparency, not me.
No.
So y'all want, you, you'd like to add transparency in there as well?
I think transparency, I, I like, you know, when I talk about honesty, integrity, and transparency, those are actually, um, those are, uh, come on, they go down at the bottom, they're individual words listed, it talk, attributes.
And typically, I've seen these in, in values. So whenever we have values on the wall, we're gonna have values that say, we're gonna be honest, we're gonna be transparent, we're going to be, we're gonna have, show integrity.
Yep.
And we're gonna provide high levels of service.
Customer satisfaction, or you, uh.
Correct.
Yeah.
Oriented.
So when you're looking at these two, whenever we start bringing information, or policies, or projects to the board, whenever we bring them, we're gonna say, how does this fit into our goals?
Yeah.
So we're gonna say, well, this asset management is one of our goals, so this is where this project fits into our asset management. Or here's this, this is part of our financial transparency.
Asset management, capital improvements.
Yeah. Yep.
So I guess that's what I'm looking for. If we can come up with the ones that you like best, then I can provide some, uh, further clarification, or put a definition to it, if you will. And then I can pass it back out to everybody.
I like three the most out of all those.
I need to go, I need to.
In there maybe?
I need to work this over and.
Yeah.
Rather than do it here.
But it's a good start. I mean, we got, we put some good, good.
One thing you might want to add into three is, uh, something about safety and stuff, or, you know, I think that's always important.
Yep.
But, uh, that's, uh, oh, you, you're talking about number three.
Safety's down on.
I think he's using number three as the basis, and what you'd like to add to.
Point, it has most of the items we're talking about.
He had it listed somewhere else under six.
Six has got safety, integrity.
Number six.
Six, yeah.
Yeah.
Safety, integrity. But I mean, you have, you have to always throw safety out there.
I'll be right back. Okay. So let me repopulate this document, and I'll send it back out to each director, and we'll just go back through that route, if everybody's okay with that?
Yeah.
And then I'll reach out to each one of you individually for specific conversations, if we need to go into more depth.
I don't read emails. I got too many emails right now.
I will do so. Any other conversation on that?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna run this, what you put in, I'll run it against, uh, DC and SARS and.
It's fine.
See if there are other smart points.
When I repopulate this, I'll send out the links with the specific pages you were talking about as well, so all the directors can see what you were thinking as well.
Yeah.
I think that'll help.
Yeah, puts us on the same, on the same footing.
I agree.
Moving on.
Thank you all for your input. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Good work. Um.
I like that integrity.
Uh, okay, we're just down to future agenda items. Number eight, items for future agendas, and I think certainly we need to address the issue, uh, from our homeowners.
Yeah.
Robert and Dixie Henson.
Yeah, we can collect that data. We can collect the data and let you know what happened out there, and bring it back, and we'll try to figure out what kind of monetary value they're looking, looking for.
Okay. Uh, I guess we can't talk about it, but I was, you know.
We can bring it back to the next meeting for discussion, though, yeah.
Yeah, and I, if, yeah, I think we need to do that.
I guess two ten in Vernis.
Yeah, two ten.
Okay.
With recommendations, right, Alan?
We can.
Or options, like, yeah.
We can.
I'd rather not just talk about it again and wait another month to, and so.
Tony, you still on?
Yes, I am.
Did you wake up? Did I wake you up?
I was turning off my mute.
Okay.
For Alan's benefit, um, this is pretty analogous to a situation that arose in the last couple of years, and so, uh, Lori, if you haven't already, you may want to share some of that documentation with him.
Yeah.
It was, uh, the ex-mayor's, uh, ex-wife. Remember that one, Lori?
Well, it's definitely up to each entity, uh, the entities that I've worked at before, most of the time, this type of compensation wasn't reimbursed, unless it was physically caused by the, uh, municipal government staff.
Well, let's, let's not decide it here. Just gather the data, and let's have a, you know.
That is, uh, Jean Carter. That's who it was.
Yeah, we'll bring, we'll collect what information we have on that, and we'll bring it back for discussion during the next board meeting.
Yeah, because I, in my mind, the key, the key player was the location of the obstruction.
Well, what I was gonna ask you, um, Tony, is it out of line to ask them for a copy of their insurance policy?
No, I, I don't know if they'll give it to you, but you can certainly ask, and at the very least, ask what their deductible is.
Well, yeah, that, and I was looking at, because a lot of policies now have the sewer backup on there, so.
Yeah.
If, if they could tell us who the carrier is, and the policy.
Reluctant to get into this too much, but it seemed to me that I heard them say, um, their out-of-pocket expenses, which suggests to me that there probably is some type of coverage, and they're looking for their deductible.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I understood him, well, we're, just to repeat what was said before, I understood him to say that their agent in Seattle wasn't coming out, and said it wasn't covered under their policy.
Adjuster.
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 Adjuster. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to get into your area.
It's very common, they have adjusters out of states and stuff.
Yeah, okay.
I, I think, just, again, not to get into, I think it's appropriate for staff to ask them for any information about their coverage, in terms of making a recommendation to the board at the next meeting.
Yep, agreed. Any other agenda items, future agenda items?
I brought up last month about the case study. I mean, you don't want to wait too many months past it, and say, yeah, remember that freeze we had back in twenty-one, you know? This is the, uh, equipment that we had in place to minimize, you know, water loss, or, you know, that type of.
And what we're trying to do is find somebody that does that, and, and provide you a good quality document.
Yeah, you don't really need to go that far. Just Google it, because there's plenty of case studies from muds, North Texas, uh.
If you want something just, uh, slapped together, then we can definitely slap something together and send it over for review, and. I'm trying to give y'all a populated document, because if we're gonna go through this, then I want somebody that's gonna do that, and have a peer review, and, and have some professors or someone involved that does this on a case-by-case basis, and does it professionally. I don't do that professionally, so I want to make sure I give you a good document. But if you're wanting something that fast, then we can put something together.
Well, I don't want it six months from now, is what I'm getting at.
That's not, that's not the intent.
Is it, is it unrealistic to think that we can have something for next meeting?
We'll try. I, it all depends on timing and schedule. We'll see what we can find.
Okay.
I've only reached out to the one resource that I'm aware of, so we'll continue to look.
Okay. Any other items? Okay, uh, next meeting is set for Monday, April nineteenth at six thirty PM. It is eight fifteen PM, and we are adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Tony.
Bye, Tony.
One of these days, we're gonna see you in person.
You just let me know.